We are already running late. Several of us went to the public engagement on start/stop times. So we're having a little challenge getting organized here. I don't have anything to add to the agenda tonight, but I do want to say that Marla is having double me replacing tomorrow. And so she is hoping if all goes really well, she might be at her second meeting in May or the first meeting in June. But she will definitely be out for a while. So is there anyone here who is in the public who wants to comment on an item not on the agenda? No? Okay. Great. Thanks. All right. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything that needs to be pulled? Based on comments from Marla, I need to pull the minutes of March 20th and the, well, both sets of minutes from March 20th. Anything else? Okay. Then this is going to be a long motion. I'm going to ask that someone make it, but I'm going to say I will entertain a motion that we approve a consent agenda consisting of the professional appointment of Heather Tourdon as the UNADL Special Educator, the approval warrants approving the issuance of teacher and administrative contracts, and approval of reductions in force consisting of a .2 FTE Design and Creative Media Position at CTE, a .4 FTE Skill Tech Director at CTE, a .25 FTE Drivers Ed Position at the High School, a .025 FTE Japanese Position at the High School, a .1 French Position at the High School, a .2 Health Education Position at the High School, and a full-time 1.0 FTE Spanish Position that is shared by the High School and EMS. Anybody?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Andre. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Thank you. For the minutes of the March 20th meeting, we need to add that Suzanne Grenling, the principal at Summit Street was present. And for the minutes of the public engagement meeting for that same night, we need to add that they were submitted by Liz Subin. Yes?
On the minutes of March 20th, on page three in the board questions and comments, in Peter's conversation, it's the third line, it should be principals with an L in there. It is missing an L.
Oh, okay.
It looks a little different without an L.
Okay. Did you find it, Kim?
Yeah, I did.
All right. Three sets of I's and we still missed it. All right. Any other corrections?
I did have an email from Kathryn Greiken asking about when she spoke to her PLPs or her professional learning communities, that she meant that she had those done at Burlington, not current.
That has been made already.
All right. I hadn't caught up with myself.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay. So let's do these as two separate motions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes on March 20th with the addition and the correction.
So moved.
Thanks, Al. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'll entertain a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from March 20th from the community engagement with the addition.
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks. Then we'll move on to the presentation from Beth on equity and her goals for the coming year. We will, at a future meeting, actually approve the goals. But for tonight, Beth is going to make a presentation and you'll have a chance to ask questions or make suggestions for changes. So with that, I'll turn it over to Beth.
Okay. So these goals are for 2018, 2019, but starting now. So instead of trying to finish them in a few months, we wrote them out so that we had more time to work on them. And then I wanted to update you on the continuous work on equity, and it really has affected my goals. And also, our work with equity has affected our Continuous Improvement Plan, and I will share that with you this evening. This is going to be confusing because I'm trying to do two of these, my own computer and that.
Let me help because I'm so good at it.
I can do it. I can do it.
Basic.
So the first goal, which has already begun, is to establish a vision that permeates the district and guides our work. So that, as you know, began last summer with the forwards from the community and then the stakeholders in the community conversations. It's to work, I started with the leadership team in the summer, worked with them in January, gathering all that data. I've worked with students on that. It's been actually the most collaborative vision that I have ever been a part of, and that's so exciting. And it's because of Voices, just having that avenue to be able to talk to community. It's very true. It's a gift to a superintendent. And then from that vision, to create an equity plan, which now where the state calls it a Continuous Improvement Plan, but learning more about equity, again, I'll explain that to you as I go through the presentation, that we really feel like it needs to be an equity plan, and I will share the why. Part of the goal is to have engaged, inspired learners, which is also equity, to develop a professional learning structure that's intentional, collaborative, meaningful, and consistent, which is why we're going with the structure of a early release, which has been downsized to 45 minutes is the new proposal, and then support the principals on instructional leadership. And that, I think, is a, it's definitely a passion of mine, and you probably know that when you hired me, that that is a passion of mine, is being in the schools and working with principals on that instructional leadership. But there's things that I need to learn too. So I'm going to seek some professional development in that avenue. I actually have applied to the National Superintendents. They have an academy for that, and so I'm excited if I get in. I don't know. They only accept 50. So we'll see. But that's my passion, and I'm hoping that I can help them. And I have been already, but they have questions about how, like schedules and all that, and I don't know those answers, and I want to be able to support them. And I think our vision needs the, they need to be instructional leadership to make sure our vision is alive and that that professional learning is happening and following through in their everyday work. Another goal, oops, yeah, I clicked the wrong one. Another goal is the EWSD outcomes. And I will explain to you as, when I get to the equity piece, on how these outcomes came to be. And right now, I'm going to tell you that they're draft. They do have to be run through the leadership team. Part of what we've been working on is that equity plan, and these outcomes match an equity plan and some overall aspirations and goals that we have for students. So then this follows through the outcome, and I will share that with you towards the end of the presentation. So I'm not going down through these now. I'm going to come back to it when I share the rest of it. I think that makes more sense. So Goal Three is to establish a fiscally responsible budget and oversight for the school district. Part of that is to meet on a regular basis. Brian and I meet all the time, but we need to have a clearer focus on the budget and make that part of, we make it part of what we talk about, but it's not a consistent what we're talking about. It seems like when we were building the budget it was, but it needs to be an ongoing conversation for us. We've been working on ensuring the state and local standards are being followed, including the guidelines for grants, which were being monitored in May. So we've already begun that work to make sure our guidelines and policies are in place for that. And then to report revenues and expenditures on a quarterly basis to the board, and then that will also be to the public. And then in September, or if not sooner, to really begin that budget process all over again and working with principals and just thinking ahead of time this summer and really using the time to come up with a budget process that includes stakeholders and a different, I think we did a good job at trying to include stakeholders, but I think we can do a better job. And so I would like to work on that process with Brian this summer. Then right sizing the district, which I've talked to you before about, and we're using the district management group to help with that. And the piece that we're working with them is defining the roles and responsibilities of who we have right now, and that, I think, will help define and right-size the district even to a better, to a better point. So then to use the roles and responsibility work to structure the district office, especially in the areas of the business and HR, I feel like we have, and instructional, but I feel like we've really worked on that this year to right-size that, but there could be more work. We don't know that, I think, until we really do the roles and responsibilities. So I think that will help. And then using the DMG Student Support Report that we received from the district management group and the audit they did in the beginning of the year, and really defining and creating effective support systems for our students. And some of the work that they did around the usage of paraeducators and other supports that we have. So we really have been diving into that work and sharing it with the leadership team. And tomorrow, we're working on some strategies at our leadership team meeting. So that work will come, and that's something that we have to spend all year really designing a better support system for our students. And then the one that we already did was to offer the early retirement incentive, and we did that this year and had four people choose to take that out of the central office. I don't know. I think that's part of the budget process. Do we offer that again? And that's something that Brian and I will have to talk about. But I did put the years there because that is a done one, but I still want to keep it on there because I want to know if it should happen again. And then Goal Five is to increase communication within the district and to the Essex-Westford community. So to continue that partnership with Voices for the following year, but also work, and I think we have started that work, to create a system that allows it to be sustainable. And that's looking at the communication, or Ben's position, the communication and PR person, and how can he take more of a responsibility for that, which Sue has been working with him and Reed this year on helping that to happen. So we've looked at his contract and making him more of a Voices for Education person without a double duty. He's doing that on top of what he does now. I want to make it part of his job. So that's the sustainable piece. And then Voices using, now they're working in groups with some goals that Voices for Education has. So I don't want to lose that even if the grant goes away. I think it's an important piece, and I think we all know we've benefited from it. I mean, even from the community, right, the community conversation we had just before this. And we had over 70 people last night for a safety communication conversations. Community conversations.
Ah, yes.
Yeah. And that was, I mean, Brian and I thought we should do that as soon as we started to have some incidences within the high school this year after the Parkland, and we said we would do it. And then I think it was Liz that said, why don't you turn that over to Voices? What amazing thing that happened. So we didn't have to have that energy. And we were part of it, for sure, but it was a wonderful opportunity to do that. And then my monthly communication via the website, I have not done that as I should. I do still try to, at least, I have the Twitter account, and three times a week I try to get, when I'm in schools, I try to tweet about that, but anything else that we do, I think it's probably more than three times a week that I'm doing that. That's an important piece to me. That's my own personal goal that I want to. I want to show everybody the great things that we're doing at Essex-Westford School District. But I also want to start using it as a professional development tool that I can work with teachers on if they join a chat. So I want to do some evening chats where people can post strategies and things they're doing that will lead to the vision and how they're seeing the vision happen in their classroom, come alive. So that's a future goal too, within that Twitter. And then the hosting of community conversation forums, using Voices to do that, but also just to, I have it as a separate one because I think it's been so important and so powerful. And what we hear even last night is the transparency from the district and being able to have a voice in the community. And tonight, showing, I don't know how it ended up, but when I was there, to show the shifts that we had from two weeks ago with the community input to the start and stop times, and then to have a new reiteration that came out. So I think they're hearing that, that things are shifting. And then continue to, and find times to email the staff and families. But I think Voices is a big piece of this communication. And the board even communicating out, I think that that's an important piece. Oops. Oh, I lost it on my own screen. So the professional growth and personal health and well-being, I always kind of put it into one, so it doesn't seem like two different goals. So the professional one, to engage with the regional superintendents and the VSA. I have been part of working on an action plan with our regional superintendents. Four of us took that on as a task in bringing the draft back. So that's been good to really dive in and using some of my facilitation skills to facilitate those meetings so they're more active. And then the VSA, continue to be a part of that work that they do. A goal eventually would be to be a trustee on that board. I'm on the New England Superintendent Board, and I've been, by default, I think, voted as co-president for this coming year. So, and then I want to seek the opportunities for the National Superintendents Association. Not now, but that is a goal to start to figure out how I can benefit from the National Association. And then, say it again, to learn how to better support principals as instructional leaders. Wellness, I need to exercise, spend time with family and friends. And then I've decided that I need to take one day off a weekend to call my own, to monitor email, but not every weekend, both days. I find a big chunk of time that I sit and email, and I've decided I'm going to do that one day a week. I mean, one day, one day a week. Wow, I'd have a lot of emails. One day a weekend and take the other one totally off, but monitor. I can't help but, that's my responsibility to monitor emails. So that's my own, my husband was really happy with that call.
Good.
So I want to talk to you about equity and how it ties to student outcomes and some work. This is draft, and I have a ton, but I know I think.
Did you put the bubbles on there? Just.
No, you know, I, I will tell you that, so the leadership team, I wanted Brian to feel comfortable with the bubbles up there and know that he's a part of it. So the leadership team, we had the opportunity, many of us, to go to ASCD, which is a national conference focused around professional development. So Building Equity, you knew that, we read this book, and the authors had a workshop, and it was a two-day workshop. So a lot of us went from the leadership team. It was an amazing two days. I would rate it right up there with the top four professional development opportunities that I've had as being for the years that I've been in teaching and as an administrator. It was phenomenal. I think that it was exceptional, even more so than if I didn't, if I didn't do it with a team, it wouldn't have been as exceptional. There were a lot of us in the room from Vermont, and we probably were not, a little less than half the entire group. So they would always make Vermont split up, and they had a good time picking on Vermont, and they're from San Diego. So, but I did share with them the work that we are doing as an equity team, and that we had read the book, and they were pleased that we, how much we were doing. So this is a piece from the book. Now, the handout that I just gave you has our vision statement, and then as a leadership team, we've been working on the theory of action. And a theory of action is if you do this, then this will happen. And it's a short-term one. It's not as long as a vision. I mean, I hope a vision lasts forever until we meet it and we can see it everywhere, and then we have to create a new vision. But a theory of action can change as we move through the system. So that piece may change. We came up with that theory of action with working with the district management group and the feedback they gave us from looking at in the fall when they handed us the report on student supports. So it's really to work, that theory of action is really about first instruction before students receive any second instruction in anything, whether it's intervention or special ed services. But everyone needs good, solid, high-quality first instruction. So that's where our focus is. We then went, that's where we were, and we went away to the equity, Building Equity pre-conference and came back. While we were there, we really talked about, Amy and I were having a discussion about the values and aspirations for our district. So looking through the teachers' beliefs that they had done in the fall, the leadership team had some beliefs, and we put them into these statements. EWSD is a place where. Now, we know that this is a place where we want to get to, right? So even though it's stated that way. And they all have to, they all fall in one of these five categories. And that's what made this more of an equity plan. This is the beginning of the Continuous Improvement Plan. On the back, it talks about how the vision came to be, which you now need to prove to the Agency of Education on how you develop your vision, how you develop your theory of action, how you develop measurable outcomes. So the measurable outcomes are where we're derived from those value and aspirations statements, and then I created them as a goal for the student outcomes. So the five areas in the equity that we dove into, had a deep dive at the pre, at the conference that we went to, they really went into each one of those areas. And while they were doing that, our team that was there were very excited because our vision fits into those five areas that I will show you. So we have growing hearts in the social and emotional engagement. We have two places where it's growing minds. So that first statement and the vision, which is a draft now, is growing hearts and minds. We looked at every day as both in the engaging and then instructional excellence. And every way is the opportunities to learn many different ways that we need to really pull in, and that's what this draft vision, when it becomes a vision, if it stays the same, has to do. It has to have those opportunities to learn in it. And then every one is the last one, the physical integration, where it's all race, all gender, everybody is in it, all learning abilities. So, and that all of that will happen for a better today or tomorrow. So we were really excited that we were learning all this, and we kept thinking about our vision, to the point where somebody would send a text when we were all off in different conferences. Somebody would send a text that would say, "Growing hearts," and somebody else would say, "And minds," when we're all in a group text, and they kept just repeating the vision together because it's what they were learning, and that seemed to really fit. So that's how those outcomes were developed. So, I mean, in the purple box now, and to show that it's equitable, so the first one is every student will read on grade level by the end of third grade. As a leadership team, I think I said that to Brian on our very first meeting in July. He was like, what do you want for kids? I was like, I want them to read at grade level by grade three. Now, that is an aspiration. We know that. But we, this is a measurable outcome, and we can, very excited because our new management, our new data tool that we have is incredible, and I can't wait for Amy to come show you how easy it is to use and the data that we will get from it. So that'll be good to be able to have that data across the district. And then every student will achieve and maintain math fluency and basic facts by the end of third grade. We felt like we needed a math one to go along with a reading one, but both of those statements show success in the future for their, as long as they're here with us in Essex, in Westford. Every student will graduate with the skills to be successful in college for, or for their studies and for employment in fulfilling career. That one, we have talked about doing for the measurement piece, which is great because now I, now I have to measure since we're doing this. But we can do it for the looking and interviewing graduates that have already gone by and surveying them and seeing how successful they are, which I've talked to Ben a lot about highlighting graduates as they move through. And then also surveying students seniors and what their aspirations are. And I even would like to survey kids as like eighth graders and then see what they say as seniors and to see if that really, if we participated in that, hopefully we have or will, and then, or is it some other way that they received that? But we can also tell by graduation rates and SATs and other kind of tests they take to if that one's filling. So, and then every student in grades seven through 12 will have a meaningful personalized learning plan. As you know, that is a law. I don't want to just be compliant. I wanted a part of every child's day that they're, that they're thinking about their own plans. We're looking at a new, which I just learned about today, a new system that would carry through with them, and we'll start with the seventh and would go through when they're seniors. Right now, we have a mixed match, but we're really looking to align that by the end of this year and making the decision that we will do that. There's opportunities for professional development, and how do you do that with kids? How do you make it an active part of their high school career, their middle school career? Eventually, I would love to see them K through 12. I think that that personalized learning plan, we can really develop when they're, when they're younger. They can, kindergartners can write goals. And then every student develops transferable skills across content areas. This is being worked on a lot at the high school right now, and by next year, they will have a system that they can, in each content area, they will be scored on the transferable skills, and they'll be able to be kept and reported on to parents and to the students. We need to figure out that rubric that they've developed here, and how does that look at the different grade levels? Again, I'd like to see it through the system, so a child would know as they go through Essex-Westford School District, that they have this transferable skills, and they know what they're working on and need to work on. And that'll help, again, with future, in their future. Let's see. The student voice is prevalent through our system, and every student has access to engaged in leadership, engaged in leadership activities within our schools and districts. I think I can start to look at what opportunities are available at each of the schools. I will definitely need principals to help with this and teachers for input. And then how many are accessing those opportunities? I think it's really important, and we learned at the workshop on Building Equity, that we, we need opportunities for all students to have a voice and take part in being a leader and feeling like a leader. So that's also surveying them to know, so they can say, yes, I'm a leader, and this is how I show, even in all ages in our system. So that's a big piece of the equity piece. And then each student experiences a culture where independence, responsibility, accountability are fostered and respected. I'm not sure how to do this one yet, except through a survey, but I know that we can figure that out. But that's part of the social and emotional engagement. It's giving them more opportunities to learn and foster their own learning. But that one, I'll have to work on to figure out how I measure. It is measurable. I just want to find the right tool to do that. At which we have, from At which we have from this conference that we went to, they did give us ideas for surveys and things to use. So that's cool. That would also, I think, those surveys, they give to teachers and then they give to students and then compare, which is pretty interesting data to look at. What we think we have for students and what the students say we have for them. Could be different. And then each student is physically active and has access to healthy food resources. This is a draft. In the meantime, I have added, citizenship is part of this too. So, which came from voices and other things. So those values and aspirations came from the conversations in October, the data that we collected from teachers and what they believe in education and from our leadership team, all compiled into a few statements and then those measurable outcomes match those statements. And I've been talking a lot.
So you ready for questions?
I am ready for questions. Yes.
So questions and comments from board members?
Pat's got one.
Great.
So I really like the look of this. There's one area though, or maybe topic, I'm not sure how it could fit in, but I would really like to see it because I noticed it's not there. Maybe in that one that you mentioned about measurables where you were thinking about a survey. I don't see anything about diversity. And you know, especially when we're focusing on equity, the idea of biases and racial biases. If we have some way of putting that in there, even if it's like adding each student experiences a culture where independence, responsibility, accountability, diversity.
Yeah.
Like, I mean, I just, I think it's, I think diversity is incredibly important and I don't really see it on here anywhere.
I do too. I think what I was thinking was through the culture, but it would be good to point out. It is in the top piece.
It's in the values.
It's in the values. Right. Yeah. Good point, Patrick. Thank you.
Question. On your citizenship piece, was that leading towards more community engagement?
Yes.
Student participation, civic responsibility?
Yeah. Yes, and I didn't add it to the measurable outcomes yet because we don't have a system supported. So in another year, if we're working on that and saying it's a value, then we need to offer students and make sure that they have that. I would love to see community service be part of a graduation requirement. And then the global citizen, we did add into that. I mean, that's a bigger aspect, but part of global citizen is being a citizen within your own community. And then growing that too.
Other comments or questions from board members?
Brian, any questions?
So Beth, what is it about grades?
Three? Well, that's a, that's a good question. So they, they, you know, they say that if a student can read by grade three, then they'll be successful throughout their educational career and beyond. Another one that I didn't put in here and I'm, I'm worried if I put it in here and there hasn't been enough talk about it is the algebra. They also say if a student is successful in algebra, they're successful in many careers. I would like to add that, but I haven't had those conversations. The grade three is a little easier to have conversations now without jumping to the algebra. That's what I wanted for a math one, but I tamed myself to do the grade three.
And so do you, do you imagine, or have you gotten to the point where you're thinking about what will it take in grades K through three?
Yes.
To get them to achieve that?
Yes. So we have had conversations also as a leadership team and if, if that statement is made, where do our resources for intervention go?
Right.
You know, and it might have to be that for a bit of time, we have extra resources in intervention while we're doubling up in the K three. And then, but you can't get rid of the, what's happening five through eight. But if you sink your resources there, the researches, that's where you'll have the most success. There also is a shorter amount of time for intervention. If they can have a 20-minute, everyday intervention to increase their knowledge in reading or mathematics and increase like by years, where when you're in middle school, intervention has to be longer, so, and it's not as quick.
One of the things that I think, even though it would be complex and complicated, would be what are the, what would be the ripple effects through the, through the student experience if this goal were achieved? Like, there must be a bucket full of other good outcomes that aren't necessarily related to reading.
Yes.
But have other sort of positive impacts.
Well, and I think that even goes to every student will graduate with the skills to be successful in college or further studies. I mean, there is definitely a ripple effect. And even the feeling to feel successful is part of equity. If they can say, "I am a leader, I am successful, I am happy when I come to school," I mean, that's all part of it. It's part of being a reader.
Right.
You know?
While we're on the topic of grade three, this is not entirely on topic, but it'll be interesting to see as we become one district, if there are different outcomes briefly in third grade in the town and fourth grade in the village as students go through a school transition. And that if, for instance, measuring kids at the end of grade three is going to show greater growth for kids who have been in the same system in the village in Westford than it is for people who just went through a transition.
Yeah, we talked about that too. And actually, at the, at the conference we went to that I keep referring to, but it was so good, I learned so much. They did say that students who transition from school, even in one system, is dramatic or traumatic on them. And we all like looked at each other like, "Eh." But I think it's more so if you're skipping a system. That's even, and I said to the table to calm everybody down as we all. I did say that's why we, it's so important that we're aligned in our instructional strategies and our curriculum and our assessments. I mean, that's even proves it more so that we have to do that and that we need the time to do that. But I think it's something we should think about, like how many transitions do kids? That would be really interesting data to look at. That was very much related to this.
Guess if Westford is like the shining star?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Yeah. Less transitions.
Except for some other things, perhaps. Okay. Other questions or comments? So as you have more time to reflect on this and on Beth's specific goals, if you have questions or comments, please send them to me. And as I said, we will be approving her goals and those will be the basis for her evaluation in the future. So it's really important that you agree with them and that you don't think anything is missing. All right. Anybody in the audience want to comment or ask a question? Yes?
I have a question. So what percentage of students are like now?
That is a really good question. We can look from school to school. We haven't been able to look across district yet because we don't have, we just received one system. And they've already dumped the data into it, so we can start to dig into that. There is a, I do have to say that there's a large, working in other districts, I am very happy with how many meet the standard now as I look at individual schools, but there's still work to do. So there's a gap between those who, who don't meet the standard at all and those who do. And that's what we have to figure out, that gap, which I think having a focus on this will help that gap because we'll have to figure out the strategies to help those students. I wish I had an answer for you. I will, as soon as I dig around in that data.
We're looking forward to having that data system so that we can look at it. But I, I think when we look, and we do have several different assessments that we use to measure that. And we do well, but we're not doing it for everyone yet. So there's room for growth. Do you have any other comments or questions? Okay. Great. All right. Are we ready to move on? All right. Thank you so much, Beth.
You're welcome.
It's inspiring, exciting, and it's encouraging and she went through that too. I just had to, I answered quite, well, three of us had to answer questions for the Essex reporter because we're running for positions on the school board. And it was interesting to see how much of what we said came up during this presentation.
Great.
It's nice that we're all aligned. Okay. School board business. The first thing is an update on our public engagement around start and end times and early release. Brian, Liz, anything you want to share with the board at this point?
Well, we just held our second community conversation prior to this board meeting. We probably had an attendance of around 20?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. Our last one was somewhere in the range of 60?
Almost 70, yeah.
70. And there's obviously been a number of engagement opportunities outside of the meetings themselves with various postings on our website. So that's great. It's, it's practicing a new muscle for us and getting stronger in how to engage in a, in a completely different way. And I think a lot of that is a residual from voices coming in and from the Nellie May Grant and all kind of practicing some new work. It's not perfect yet and we, I think we may have started with a fairly sophisticated and complex issue.
We're looking for an easy one.
Yeah. As I said to Liz, like, can we pick an easy one next? So she said, "Sure, let's do transportation." So, yeah, we, you know, but it is, it is really exciting to work with the public to both understand something in a common way and then to hear different perspectives. And so, and you know that we had a, a great turnout yesterday with regards to the safety. So I think we're, I think we're seeing some, some work by the board and by the administration that is new and it's really exciting.
Do you want to update the board? I think specifically around the high school piece that has changed.
So we, we shared with the group tonight and with the educational leadership team earlier today, a version that continues to line up start times of K eight by age level so that grades are starting at a similar time. We continue to create a common duration on a K eight level for school day. And the proposal that was originally released was that we would shift the start time of the high school from eight to 8:30. Not that we would change the duration of the day, it would still remain six hours and 35 minutes, but it would shift to 8:30, which we knew from the research is the earliest late start that's research supports. As we have gone through this, we recognize that it is the earliest late start that research supports and was creating a number of conversations that we just hadn't kind of navigated yet with regards to the impact to Center for Technology, the start of that day, the block schedules of that day, the sending communities and how it would all work. And we also started to look at all the other potential conversations we could be having with regards to our high school, including duration of day and schedule and how that would work. So the version two brings that back and does not take that first step right now, or at least not propose to take that step, from an eight o'clock start to an 8:30 start. Then on, on early release and late arrival for collaborative time, we heard pretty strongly across the last month that doing it differently so that in effect, somebody who had children in multiple buildings would have three different schedules in the course of a week, a Monday schedule, a Tuesday schedule, a Wednesday schedule, and then back to Thursday, Friday, that people were saying it would be much better to align those. We saw some real educational value in that collaboration opportunity. So what we proposed was a early release, 45 minutes, one day a week. We have pulled back from identifying the day. We still feel like there's more opportunity to engage the community about what a day might be. And then, do you want to talk about some of the feedback that we specifically requested tonight with regards to that tentative schedule?
Yeah, so we asked the group tonight to weigh in on, on some of these changes and just to get sort of a straw poll of how people were feeling about it. I think in the beginning, there was a lot of concern about switching. I'm looking at real-time feedback from the people who were there tonight and it seems to be that there's real support for taking our time and doing it right rather than rushing to do it first. I'd say that was a shift. First, people were thinking, "Yes, we have to do it." I think we've moved to, to, to understand the complexities a little bit. I think all of this effort and this initiative has been really good in that way, that the more that we can make the complexities, just like with the transportation forum, people thinking about that. It, it takes away the, it dissipates some of the energy and it, and it results in people thinking, thinking it through in a different way. So I would say that we've gotten, we have some feedback that gives the administration a little bit more work because it was completely even and it doesn't give any clear direction of which way to move. Other, other, some other feedback was real clear about the ways people want to see the administration invest its time. So that feedback, real time, has been really useful. And for the viewing audience, this was, this will all be available on the website, the link to the questions we asked. It will, we'll continue to keep that open so that if you weren't able to attend last night or the first meeting, you can still weigh in, read, look at the presentation, go through the presentation and the links on that presentation are live, so you can weigh in that way. So I think, I think, as Brian said also, I think what we're doing is building this muscle. We keep flexing them. This week, it's been a lot of opportunities to, to talk about getting better at this and not being perfect, but letting the community know that we're really trying and really invested in learning and hearing from what they have to say. And I think that, that expectation is growing and it feels really good to me.
Questions, comments?
So talking about backpedaling on changing the high school start time. I know that A, that was the thing that was most supported by research of anything that we were discussing.
Yes.
So it was something that I was excited about and I know some parents had commented that they were excited about. And two, it sounded like in your first engagement meeting, the highest supported thing was do it all in one fell swoop, whatever sort of changes we're going to make. So that like just changing start and end times without instituting the professional development and then instituting professional development later would not be beneficial to people, which I can understand and people are anticipating like, "It changes one way this year and then it might change another way the next year." So are we then talking about not doing any start and end time changes this year? Are we talking about doing K through eight?
Yeah.
Which then aligns all of the start times at eight, so traffic and transportation will be more difficult than currently?
So, I mean, just pardon, that we are in a process of being responsive, not necessarily backpedaling, and we're still in a design phase. So we're, we're doing this through an iterative process. So we had heard some feedback and drop back, but you're right, we, that is something that has been high on a, high on a like list with regards, for decades. One of the elements that we made a significant change to either a start or end time for every K eight school in the iteration, in the first iteration, and that remains in version two. And that sets it up so that there's about a 15-minute separation between a K three to a, or a K two, K three to a three-five, there goes from 7:45 to eight to 8:15 and then remains at eight rather than 8:30. We had some really good feedback tonight about whether 8:15 is a number so that there's some continuity and consistency between, you know, our most egregious ones. I mean, the high school was at eight, but we had two middle schools that were starting at 7:30 and at 7:35. Those are now moved to 8:15. So we have been following the research. It is that when we got to the high school, there's also a lot of research on high schools on the move, changing to proficiency-based graduation requirements, changing to standards-based grading. There's a lot of different changes that are happening and what we want to make sure is that we manage the succession of those changes in a way that promotes and leverages the best opportunity to come out at the end. And that's part of the pause. So that was in version two. We had said that our, our- of the pause. So that was in version two. We had said that our, our attempt is to try to deliver to, um, the community, to the board of a sort of a, this is where we're gonna now start to design around by May first. So, we'll continue to receive feedback. The people participating today, um, two to one, are not in favor of the direction of not changing the high school.
Right.
Those were primarily parents. Um, so, again, good feedback.
To under that, they're not in favor of not changing the high school. They preferred it when we were changing it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So, we asked them, are, are you in agreement with this direction of not changing the high school? And fifty percent of those responding said, I am not in agreement with that decision or that direction.
And wanted to see a later start time. Right. And then, just to clarify, that when we asked it, the, um, it's for next year. So it's not that that's off the table with the changes to the, it's really important to think of that year as figuring out the best way to go for the twenty-twenty, for the twenty-nineteen, start of the twenty-nineteen school year. Um, because there are a lot of things to figure out, and through this conversation, we've had, I think there's been more understanding of if we take our time and do it right, it might be better than just starting it because we, that urgency might be less urgent than the other alignment across the district. And if we start with that K through eight alignment, maybe, uh, we'll come up with a, a, a much more robust plan for the, for the high school and tech center in, in twenty-nineteen.
So I think that's important, that changing the high school start time isn't off the table forever.
No.
It might be off the table for next year. Brenda?
So, one of the, um, chats, one of the tensions that we continue to hear is where does the new transportation plan fit into this?
Right.
And, um, I think it's hard to separate it from the discussion about start and end times because it could have a huge impact either way. Um, so, I'm, Brian, I was hoping you could remind us or just give us a sort of an update on, if we're able to come to an agreement about start and stop times for next year in May, does that still give the administration time to plan for a new transportation system by the end of August? And is the plan still to do a phased implementation where we're not talking about a brand-new district-wide edge, uh, transportation plan, but maybe like a phase one, phase two, phase three? Can you just kind of remind us of where that is?
Yep. So, um, uh, so, three, three elements there is that we're, we're definitely, we need to find out what we're planning around. So this becomes a critical one, and we knew that this was also part of the problem of improving our transportation system with some of our start and stop times and durations.
True.
So, um, and so we're trying to get that new vision of what we're planning around. My intention is we've moved back to, um, possessing the software and being able to do all the routing in-house. We've, we're very, um, we were very dissatisfied with having that capacity and that competency done by a vendor because we couldn't go through iterations, we also couldn't work on our own time schedule.
Right.
So we brought that back in, and we have our cons, our transportation consultant being trained on it and myself that is working with it so that we can start to do iterations. The intention is, is that if we have something to plan around by May first, that it will be a process of a couple of weeks to run iterations and routes so that we could start to put that information out, because that's the next element for people to digest.
Right.
Um, that, so that, that's the, the horizon would, not to be to surprise people in August, but to then proceed to manage the anxiety over the course of the summer with more public engagement. And, so then the third part is the phasing.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we need a transportation system in. We'll be working simultaneously to understand what parts of that we wanna self-perform and what parts of it do we wanna contract out. And what we've seen as sort of the cost benefit is that we would have the greatest return on building the special education transportation and doing that in a self-perform basis with a hybrid potentially of leasing vehicles from a contractor so that we don't have that first initial outlay.
Right.
So those are the elements that are going. You know, two, two points here is we may run out of runway.
Mm-hmm.
And we are coming up against a very practiced need to slow down. So, and, and, and we have to, we have to imagine like where we are now and that, that, that first reaction to slow down, um, we see it in a number of issues in the school board level and our communities have seen it, is that it takes months or years or more for us to, to really make sure we've got something that's perfect. And the reality is, is that that ability to obtain perfect is not always even an ability, that there's uncertainty and volatility and there's gonna be change in everything that we do. So, you know, part of these muscles we're also building in this engagement is also trying to build muscles in which issues are really complex, they're kind of messy. We're gonna be working with certainty levels that are much more towards the seventy percent level than the hundred percent level.
Yeah.
And then there's gonna be volatility in some of that stuff.
Just a quick question. Do we have any idea when the Williston Road upgrade through EJ will occur? What timeframe?
I, I know nothing. Is it something that you know is scheduled for a beginning?
I think they're planning to run the alternate road.
Oh, the.
The press.
The press.
Yeah. I think it might be important we keep that date and timeframe in mind.
Yeah, that could have its own fun.
For sure. One more frustration. Any other questions or comments from Brian, for Brian?
Next question.
Yes, Nick?
Something which I'm sure you're, you're finding or will, or will find is, um, is gonna be the conflict with extracurriculars, specifically sports. I, one, one of my, one of my friends heard that this was, this was one of, uh, was, this is like a topic of discussion. He ran up to me, he's like, Nick, tell them not to do this because, because there's, and, and some have said, yeah, sure, I, I'd love to get that, some extra sleep. So, it, like, some, some athletes, like, they, they regularly, they regularly come home at like six as it is or, or so, just, um, just due to how long their practices last or like waiting for their practice to start. And, um, and that's definitely a thing to consider. I, I personally, I, I, I wouldn't extend, I wouldn't delay more than an hour just for this sole purpose, especially as such a considerable amount of students to, uh, do it, do extracurricular sports. So, uh, just, uh, just, just some feedback.
Yeah. No, it's good feedback. And we've had, i- it's actually been not so much of the duration, the concern by athletes that I've heard is the, the need to early release for home games.
Yeah, yeah, that too.
So, now you're missing that class time in block seven-eight. And, um, you know, a lot of, especially upperclassmen are stacking their schedules junior year so that seven-eight isn't really a negotiable block for them. Seven-eight's an AP class or a pretty, or a stretch class. So, um, that's a real consideration. And, you know, we know that there is. There's four hundred to five hundred kids that are involved in, um, sports or extracurriculars. The thing that has happened in a lot of schools that we wouldn't necessarily wanna see is you move the school day later and people fill in the mornings so that you have kids getting here at, you know, right now, a lot of the clubs start at seven-fifteen, seven-twenty. You know, you can imagine that people start to say, well, what we'll do is we'll do morning practice and we'll start at five-thirty and we can go. And, and really, you know, the whole idea is the sleep. You know, the sleep is the physiological need that is missing. So, there's a, there's a whole lot to this, um, that is important for us to, and I, maybe I gave that like off-the-table concept. It's, I really don't think that we can turn our back on the research.
Yeah.
It's a, it's not an if, it's a when, and the key part is the how. And the unintended consequence that we started feeling was the potential to our tech center started to get us really concerned because we are, because that is a, that is an element. We can see that in our half-days. When our district decided to do half-days, it meant that there was a hundred and sixty-five kids in the tech center that left before the end of school day.
Kim?
So, I have a couple of questions, but Brian, is that, can you explain that? Because we have sending schools that start later already.
Yep.
So I'm just trying to understand, if you're a Essex High School student and you are a CTE student, who happens to be an Essex High School student, you're not on the schedule for the tech center? Or you're on the EHS?
So the tech center mirrors the block schedule of the high school.
Okay.
So, what it affords is that the largest sending school is able to, the kids can come in and have a one-two block and do an academic, which might be their PE, there might be their fourth-year English, their third-year English, some of the graduation requirements, so they can take care of those and then matriculate into the tech center going into block three, four, five, six, seven. And then there's the dismissal that starts to happen. So it, it changes where that academic, that academics can happen towards the tech center and the high school graduation requirements, that kind of crossover. Do we navigate this? Absolutely. There's very little consideration from sending schools of their time schedule to the impact of the tech center. It feels awkward that we would be the next one in line, having little consideration on the tech center by the change of our schedule. So it really felt like we needed to drop all the way back and understand, how does the tech center respond? And also, maybe, how does the region start to get a little bit more aligned?
Yes, that's, that would be the question, I think. Has it been that the tech center hasn't been responsive to the, so many high schools around us having changed their start time?
What I learned from Bob, I think, as I understand it right, is that some of the sending schools will do a bus to the tech center and then go back and do a high school run. So, they've worked it out with their later starts, which means, you know, so, he's, he right now has, is developing a Google survey to send out to sending schools. And I also think it has to be a conversation in the RAB, in the Regional Advisory Board.
Yeah.
But we haven't had those conversations. He doesn't have the answers from the sending schools yet.
And we find, you know, that CVU is a Tuesday, Burlington, South Burlington is a Wednesday moment. So, there is even like on the early, or the late arrivals by high school, which is a common practice in the county, the day that it happens is not common, nor is the time duration common. So, we've been dealing with it, um, to that degree. I don't think it's been a responsiveness, it's been, we've been responding. The difficulty is maybe we could have a more proactive regional conversation.
I think, and I, I'm not sure, I, I just don't know, I guess my concern is, I'm not sure that the community conversations that are happening the hour before are vetting some information on this. If we're expecting there's gonna be a decision in May, then I have a whole bunch of other.
Well, it's an administrative decision.
I know, but understood that there are concerns that every, that are district-wide related to using late starts or early arrivals every week, or, not that it's for the board to decide, but some of the concerns are, are we, we are currently in the Essex Town Schools, working PLCs in the school day with scheduling, without this. We couldn't do it across a district to get that cross-building work. Um, but it is happening and has been happening for six or seven years without the, the late start or early arrival. And so, the other piece that I guess I would just wanna know that we have planned for well, not we as a board, but that is planned for well, is as those PLCs were supported by people being trained and staying in their leadership position as teachers for a few years and, and were being supported by Ellen as the professional development person or the curriculum coordinator, whatever that was. I apologize, I'm getting all the titles wrong. But that was very intentional work. And my concern is that it's a big ask, and are we ready to support it adequately to have it be meaningful time? I think the worst thing that could happen is that we're not prepared for that to be meaningful time for our educators and to have, certainly we're hearing inconvenienced families without maybe having a plan for how kids could stay longer or get here earlier, or there's a bunch of moving parts. And I know once a month MMU does it and it's a longer block of time, you know, there's a bunch of different models. Um, but knowing that it took some intentional work at the building leadership level for the seven years it's been in effect in ETSD and the valuable we heard from those principals, we heard from teachers, the impact, and that has had for equity for students in the classroom and their problem solving around student needs. Um, it, it was really intentional and, and it was fit within the day. So, there are different models, and I, I guess my concern is that we hear a little bit more about.
Well, we, it's one of the elements that, I mean, is the, is a wrestling match and attention, is that it's fit in the day, you know, in those two schools in particular is because they have the shortest day in the districts for, in K through eight.
Yeah. Well, I know, we gave up like the Tuesday staff meetings too, so there's, I, I know, and this is the thing though, I guess my, I didn't know if there'll be another occasion for us as a board to have conversation on it, because they're happening in advance of these meetings with the community.
So, I, I would suggest if you have some specific questions like that, that you send them to me and that we get them responded to either in writing or at a future meeting.
So we, we'll have a chance as a board.
We did have that whole discussion at the last meeting.
And I think it would be really helpful for board members to go to that link and put their questions there too, because it, it, it would be really helpful for that all to be housed in one place.
So, could you send, would you send that link to all members?
To the board, sure, absolutely, sure.
Yeah. That would be helpful. I'm gonna move us along, we have a lot of other things on the agenda. Um, but please, um, do go to the link and do put your questions on there. All right, next is an update on, did you have anything from the audience? Okay. Um, an update on employee help benefits.
So I sent that change to you with Datapath. We are going with Datapath. Um, the, all the schools in Vermont that were with future planning have chosen, really it's the only option, to go, go with Datapath. We heard, um, at the superintendent's all-member meeting on Thursday from VisVit and that plan of transition. And they, there are many bumps in the road with a company just leaving us, but Datapath is trying to pick up. Um, and there'll, there'll be some bumps in the road along the way. There's not much we can do about it.
Would you just back up for a second and remind the board what Future Planning Associates was doing and what Datapath will now do?
So, Future Planning has, um, like as a copayment, or if you go to the doctors and you have your, your payment, they hold the HRAs. They also have some HSAs that they do also, or you can find your own institution to hold that. But the HRA, so when you pay your co-pay, or whatever you, you do, they send you money. Um, they send you a check or deposit it right in your checking account. So, your portion, um, it's the employees' portion and then your portion, and it's part of that is covered through the contract, is covered by the, um, well, it was Future Planning, but they will put them, they help pay for your appointments, surgery, whatever that is, that portion.
So, it's a.
It's a, like a bank, but it's.
It's a flexible.
Yeah.
Account, right?
Yes, it is.
It's a flexible savings account.
It's that also.
That can be used to pay your co-pays and your deductibles.
Yes.
And they keep track of when you met your next and all of that.
So you have a debit, almost like a debit card, that you go and you can.
Right. And so, Future Planning had worked with VHI and VisVit and thought they could handle this change, because this is happening all across the state with the new help plans. And now they've decided they can't. And so, that's why Datapath is set, stepping in. But it's creating some hassles for teachers. Um, so I think the board just wanted to be aware that we do have another company that's gonna take over. But you may hear from teachers that this is not, um, it's not smooth, it's not a smooth transition. Questions, comments?
Once the contractual obligation.
Once the contractual obligations are met by the employees, then they'll be switching to billing up the district for the remainder?
Yes.
And then we'll be reimbursing either directly to the health provider or to Data? I, I'm not trying to get into the details, but at some point there'll be a crossover where the district will assume responsibility for the bills.
And that is all run through the new Data Path. So they are the managers of that, the money coming and going.
They'll front the money to the provider.
Yeah.
Then we reimburse Data.
I'm pretty sure that, that's how it happened.
Okay.
I've used Future Planning in the past, in my last district, and it was very smooth, very easy to use until.
I think they weren't prepared for the whole state to be doing this.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, our next item is the school calendar adjustment because of weather day closures.
So we had four closings due to weather. We have originally, the calendar was set for 178 days. I'm requesting that we use three of those days. Our original date was end, for a student date was to end on June 12th. And I would, my recommendation is for them to go till the 13th. And then teachers will have to have, they'll have their five days at the end, so they'll go all the way to the 20th. They still have to, they have to make up the days because they have 189 days in their contract.
Questions, comments?
The water main break, I have not heard. So I'm hoping that the Agency of Education, well, it's really the State Board, the Vermont's Board of Education, will send a wa, will give us a waiver for that day. It wasn't a predictable, normal kind of weather day, that was a town thing. And in my waiver, I mentioned that we were able to go to school the next day with water and also.
So if that doesn't get approved, we'll have to change the end date for high schools.
That's right, that would have, and I would come back to that. So they have, their next meeting is on the 17th and they told me I should hear on the 17th whether that waiver is approved. So if it doesn't, if it does not get approved, it would mean that the high school and CTE would go on the 14th. I'm hoping that doesn't happen. Part of the waiver, I explained transportation and, I mean, it is a whole slew of things that have to happen if it's just the high school in session and CTE.
Are we ready for a motion? So I would entertain a motion that we move the last day of school to June 13th.
Yeah, you can do it during, you can do discussion.
Motion ready.
Okay, thanks, Andre.
Discussion, Kim.
I'm just trying to understand why we wouldn't let go to the end of the week or use the instructional days that were planned for. Even not, certainly not carrying into the next week, but I guess it's directly up.
What I've been more familiar with. They weren't really, at least I don't recall them being built as snow days. The 178 was with any sort of build-in or anticipation, but rather instructional days. And it always gave us some buffer that if our snow days would have carried us to Monday or Tuesday, we didn't have to do it. I know we have a common number of days now in the count, in the contracts. And I think for CCSU, there have been times where those classroom days were, caused them to have to go the following beginning of the week. But because ETSD had built bigger instructional days, I just didn't know why we wouldn't, why we'd give up those instructional days.
Well, part of it is professional development being used. We had planned on some Bridges professional development in the town and the days, that would then spread the teachers out to the following week to go that whole entire week if we used two other days. Or it would go until, I can't remember how it worked with professional development, but it wasn't going to work with the Bridges training, which is a lot. And also considering families, I've had a lot of families ask me about the last day of school, like a lot through email when that will be. I mean, and that's your, that's your choice if you want to push it to Friday, that's.
So I, I, I think this is a discussion that we as a board need to have maybe away from this immediate decision. Personally, I have some questions about giving up instructional days. But I, I was hoping we would wait and have it, the discussion away from our decision-making time, but maybe we need to have it tonight. You know, when we first started building extra student days into our contract, it was because we wanted more instruction. It was not because we wanted more options if we had snow days. What's the board's pleasure? Do you want to get into that discussion tonight? Or do you want to accept this recommendation?
Let's go for it, we're here.
Okay.
And why not just schedule it for the next regular meeting?
Well.
Well, this calendar, yeah, true, I think that families, I hear from families, they want to know now. I've had a lot of people question me about this when this was going to be approved.
They're all trying to figure out when their kids can start summer activities, so. But of course, my, one of my points is we could still have a snow day, you know?
We could.
It's certainly not unheard of that. We have snow days in April, yeah.
I don't presume to have any idea what plans are for professional development for May 7th, but that's a half a day. From what I understand, a good portion of the district is already trained in Bridges and it's just ETSD that is not, is that correct?
Yes, but they're also looking at, for the other side of the district, there, some have to be trained and it also newer teachers that were not trained. And also we're trying to schedule the professional learning community trainings.
So you're telling us, if, what day of the week is the 13th? I don't have a calendar.
13th is Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. So. So if, could we, could we add one or two student days without messing up the professional development or not?
You could do whatever you would like and we'll have to work around it. What I would suggest though, if you're going to add days, I would add one day and leave that Friday in case the high school has to go and make up their water day. So you could have, unless you want the high school to come back on a Monday.
No, graduations are 16.
Yeah, graduation is 16.
And the last day is usually a makeup test day.
So what I'm hearing is we have a motion on the table to have the last day of school be the 13th. There is some interest from some board members in perhaps changing that to the 14th so that we have 176 student days instead of 175, which is more instructional time. Comments?
I guess I'm astounded, I guess is the worst, good word, that we have no snow days or potential snow days built into our calendar. We know from, okay, as a village resident, theoretically we walk and we don't have to worry about cars. But that's not a reality. The reality is, is that in the past Essex Town Schools and Westford Schools would have, because of road conditions, would have snow days. It's not unusual for Vermonters to have snow days. Good God, we're praying for snow. Okay, but I haven't had a good sledding day all winter, so, because it was too gosh darn cold. But anyhow, so I can't imagine that we wouldn't have snow days. So I think we need to build potential and I remember having to change graduation from one weekend to the next way back when. Okay, because we had, get this, snow days. So I'm sorry, we wanted student, student time, okay? I'm voting for, at the very least, one day. I, I expected to have student days. We're going, we're talking about leaving three student days on the table.
Yeah, and I, again, I want to have a discussion about what we do in the future at another time. But for tonight, I hear you saying you would move it to the 14th.
I want at least, at least one more day, okay?
Other comments, Keely?
Are we required to have the same number of days for K through eight in the high school? Or can we settle on a date like the 14th and it doesn't matter if the high school gets a waiver or not? If they get a waiver, then they have the same number of days, otherwise they have one fewer day?
Correct.
We could do that. Other comments? Anyone want to amend the motion to, from the 13th to the 14th?
Oh, I made the motion and I'll amend it to reflect now.
Or why don't you withdraw your first motion?
I'll withdraw my first motion for voting and I'll amend the new motion to reflect now.
And make a new motion for.
To move the day to the 14th.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? So the motion is to have the last day of school be June 14th. And the understanding is that if we're not granted for the waiver for the high school, that their last day will still be on the 14th. They'll have 175 student days and all the other schools will have 176. Okay? You?
I just mentioned the 14th as an example, not saying that that was particularly better or worse than anything else.
Well, I think, I, I picked up on it because Kim had suggested adding a day. Beth had suggested not adding two days because Friday could be a challenge. So that's how I got to the 14th, okay? Kim?
I guess I, I don't want us to be obstructionist to the training that needs to happen, but I want us to be really mindful of the commitment in the contract to the days that we've requested for students. And if this is a, a sort of a one-off because it's a transition year and that's really necessary, I, I think I could go with whatever is going to serve the greater good in this year. But I would say that it, we would want to be pretty protective of the student days we've built into the contract as days that were important to student learning, so. And especially not fully, fully understanding who needs to be trained where. Like how much benefit is being derived for a pre-K 12 system if only pockets are needing that extra day of professional development?
That's why I think we need to have a discussion about future years. And if those 178 student days were important to us, what should we be doing in our calendar for next year about weather days? And, you know, do it proactively ahead of time so the administration isn't scheduling other things thinking that we will do what has maybe been done in the past, I don't know. Okay, so we have a motion on the table to have the last day of school be June 14th. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same nay. Thank you. Now, we have next year's calendar on the table. And in light of the discussion we just had, what would be your suggestion?
The, as it's presented, as I presented it to you, so the 12th of June is 178th day. Which is a Wednesday.
So I guess I would say that if we really want to have 178 student days, should we build snow days into this calendar? Kim? Or?
We had two or three years in a row where we had no snow days. It like, in the past five years, there were two or three years where we had no snow days at all and it didn't impact. So I guess the way it had been used, because we didn't build in snow days in Essex Town, we had the 178 days and we would go to that Friday without really regard, I guess, for the teacher's professional development going into the next week. We wouldn't typically go into the next week for families because it was very disruptive for camps. And camps can't plan without knowing if people are coming and families can't plan if they need camps, if they don't know if they're going the following week. So that was how we used it. We, we tried to have that be the way it worked. So we didn't actually add like extra, like one, I'm not even completely positive we could put on extra days.
So.
Based on the, the contract, that we could say 180 days and then back out of it? I'm not positive.
You wouldn't be doing that. You, you, what you do is you say, this is the last day of school if you use three snow days. And if you don't have three snow days, then this is the last day of school. And so it's sort of, do you build it in first or do you add it as it happens? And I think you could do it either way. One option would be every time you have a snow day, to just let the whole district know that the last day of school is going to move to the 13th for the first one. And we could decide right now that if there was a second one, last day of school would move to the 14th. And then if there's more than two, we're going to have to come back and talk about it. Does that make sense? Keely?
Yeah, I can see the value of having a sort of shaded in days like these will be school if there's no days. I don't see any instructional value to ending the school year on a Monday or Tuesday ever. Because all you learn is how to throw a water balloon and we don't need to.
Usually it ends up being a nervous dismissal. It's a question of that, I agree. All right, so.
I think the problem, the only thing with that, Keely, is that we would have to have 175. So if our projected last day, whatever it is, whatever the numbers were to work out by law, if we, because we have the 178, we have a three-day cushion. But I think you guys may have had in the junction last year, you guys had to come back on Monday because the number of school days was not enough to cover the days that had been off. So we've, we've seemed to have had the cushion.
If you're going to have 175 landing on Monday, then you add those snow days so that you get to Wednesday or something.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's why the 178 helps.
Yeah, it's nice to have a day in the middle of the week, the potential last day.
Do you think it would be reasonable to add some notation on to this?
Yeah.
Okay. And we're just being asked to affirm this calendar. It really isn't our job to make the calendar. So, can you pitch your, keep, thank you.
Martha, I have one more question.
Oh, okay, yes.
Are there any changes to the distribution of other vacations and conference days and early releases stuff dur, during the year? It looks very similar to this year, but if something has changed. Could you draw our attention to it?
I was paying attention to the computer, sorry, trying to get it back away.
Are there any major changes, like have any vacations moved or anything?
The only, I, so this is set by the regional superintendents. And then I had to ask for a waiver because of the two days, one day in October and one day in March for the student, for the parent conferences. So I had to go for that waiver, but nothing is different or out of the ordinary at all.
No half day, yeah, I was going to say.
Well, the half days are.
The half days are gone.
September, March and May.
There's one half day for some schools on, in October, the way that they do student-led conferences.
So if we did not end up. So if we did not end up doing the weekly early release, would this calendar change to get that professional development time back?
Could. We'd have to bring it back. We'd have to.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just going to say the efficacy of that way of organizing professional development is, I think it's worked well for some of the things that we needed this year to kind of come together as one district, go through some vision work, go through some values work. But to build PLCs and to transform and move organization forward, it's just too many weeks in between. It's not recurring enough. So we wouldn't, I don't think there's anything that we'd come back and ask for three days, four months apart from each other.
I think they, you know, try to build it in some other way. Not as, it wouldn't work as well, but they'd figure something out. Diane?
Why, why is October nineteenth a vacation day?
What is that?
No, no, that's the eighteenth. And seventeenth says early release. But the nineteenth says vacation.
Right.
Usually, usually October is considered a great month for learning. And, yeah, generally, we don't have snow until at least the end of the month, so.
It is a good month for learning, but it's also, it's a long stretch from the beginning to November. So a lot of colleges have their suicide break at that time. That's the reason for it, because it's a very long stretch.
And it's a holdover, frankly, from statewide teachers convention.
Okay.
And the region still considers it a day of need.
Any other questions or comments? Entertain a motion to affirm the calendar for 2018, 2019. With the noted suggestions that we've made. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Superintendent Staff update?
So there were two letters that you have received. And I just think it's important to note them into the minutes. That we have Elizabeth Sarakas.
Syracuse?
Syracuse.
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 Oh, okay. From, let me see, I'm trying to read this with my, from Fleming. That, to announce that she will not be returning for the next school year. And then we have another one from Fleming, Benjamin Turley. That will not, will end his time as a learning specialist at Fleming. Those positions will both be rehired, rehires.
Okay, great. Test team communications update?
Beth, can I, I just sent you an email. Can you put that up while I start this? We've done a lot of talking about Voices. And that's what we've been focusing on for communications a lot. I wanted to pull this up because Ben put together a little bit of a presentation for us about what he's, what we've been doing and he's been doing around the budget. Specifically around communications that I think would be helpful for people to know how we've been pushing out the budget information into the community. Oh, shoot. I'll get it up there. Pat, do you want to do some, do you talk about other communication while I give it?
Sure. I can handle the Voices stuff. The safety meeting that Voices put together was extremely well attended last night. In the Voices planning meetings, we actually debated about how the discussions were going to go. At least from what I saw, everything went very smoothly. Everyone was very respectful. There were no arguments that I saw at any tables, which is great. And also the timing, like at our table, we were, if anything, we wanted more time. And we were concerned that ninety minutes was kind of bordering on the end of how long we could hold people's attention. But I realistically thought that we easily could have been there for two hours. And that extra thirty minutes of time could have been spent just in discussion around the table. People that I had never met before, with the exception of Aaron Maguire, who was sitting at my table. So I think that outreach ran really incredibly well and very well received from everything I heard with the community. Liz and I will be meeting with Ben tomorrow as well to do more communication planning. And then, yeah, the budget.
So I just wanted to point out, we've been working really hard on all of these engagement efforts and in communication in general to figure out what is the best way to get this information to the community. And I just wanted to point out what we have been trying. And again, solicit any comments or feedback or suggestions of how. But for the first time, we created a budget-specific page that was on, that's on the EWSD website and gives all ten schools. And on that is all the board agendas and all of the report. And all of the budget information is housed, for the first time this year, in one place on the website. We've done front porch forum posts, one, two, three, four, five, six front porch forum posts in all different communities with information about the budget and ways to get in touch with us. We've had an ad in the Essex Reporter that appeared on March eighth. There are links on all the websites, on the, in the district websites, to the articles and the ads in the reporter. So we're doing it that way, too. And for mail and print, for people who are not digital online people, we did send a mailer to, a postcard was sent out to everyone. We have two hundred, we printed two hundred and fifty copies of the report. And they're being distributed all through the town and in different locations. And it's also a phone call away. If you don't have one, you can call the central office and it will be mailed directly to you. So we are getting those print versions out. The email reminders are going out for the annual meeting. And to all EWSD families are getting that information. On social media, there have been posts about all the budget board meetings, all the budget presentations, open board seats, annual meeting. All that information has been pushed out on Instagram, Twitter, Facebook. And then again, additionally, we have sandwich boards outside. They're in place now to remind people of the vote. And the information on budget was sent in the Westford newsletter as well. So these are all the ways we're trying to make sure that the budget, that people know about, about the budget, when to vote, and the details of it.
Questions, comments? Great job. I, you know, it just seems like the information is in lots of places, so.
Can I, one question or suggestion? I'm wondering if there's a piece of that that maybe Nick could get out to the students who would be eligible to vote? If that's something you guys would want to coordinate on? Just make sure we have the right polling places and times for new voters. They may not.
They can create a hard copy that can be printed out that has the information that I was actually going to go around, want to have a day off later this week to hit some of the places for people who don't have computing access. So I was going to ask, you know, senior center bulletin boards around town just to make sure that there are, you know, there's at least some avenue. I don't know if that would be useful to have at the school. But if you could print off some flyers and maybe get them hung up around, that would have the same basic information as the postcards do. And it's, you know, it's a physical copy.
That'd be useful, yeah.
Yes, oh, yes, that's right. And it's, if they're seventeen, they, now, if they're going to be eighteen by November, they can register now.
Is it by November or by the vote date?
They can't vote now.
By the vote, right, by the vote date.
They could vote in primary.
They can't vote.
They can't, they have to be eighteen by the, whatever the vote date is, right?
Right.
The eleventh, is it the eleventh? So eighteen by the eleventh. And then the three polling places.
And the only one other update is that we did have a presence, Voices had a presence at the Fine Arts Night, which was extremely well attended. I don't know how many people were here, thousands. And it's a reminder to us, Ben and I were at the table. There were a lot of people who came up. And we just had a chance to introduce ourselves and the initiative. And there was a lot of appreciation for, for the presence there. So that was, all these little hits are ways to get people to know who we are and what we're about.
Great.
And the Jericho mailing problem has been cleared up.
Oh, yes.
I did, I did check with Essex residents who have Jericho mailing addresses. They did get the postcards this year, so.
Just one thing on communication, just in a note of appreciation for not just the Voices stuff and certainly you guys, but like the tone and the culture that's happening around engagement that Beth and Brian are dumping into and letting it happen is amazing. And sort of leading it, that happens because you guys are willing to put yourselves out there. And people are just so, I'm just hearing so much appreciation for that opportunity to have Voice to things that are pretty concerning. So thank you, guys, both.
Yeah. Okay. Statewide updates, I guess. The biggest update this week is that the Commissioner, I mean Secretary of Education resigned. Clearly not, in my opinion, a good sign for what's going to happen to public education at the end of session, or perhaps in general. And I'll just speak for myself and say, I think it's very sad. I think Rebecca was the best leader that I have seen in my lifetime for our K through twelve system. And it's really disappointing that we're losing her. So we'll see what comes next. There's actually a great article in Vermont Digger today that kind of talks about the timeline and steps and how things will go from here. The change in education funding did pass the House. It's now in the Senate. Nobody in the Senate is saying anything. The governor is being really clear that he will veto the bill. So who knows? Anything else, Kim?
I don't think so. I'll have a meeting a week from Wednesday. And so before our next meeting, I'll have whatever the latest update is from the SBA. But Martha's been on it on our funding, which is the biggest, I think, outstanding matter. There are lots of them, but.
Yeah, there are lots of them. The special ed bill received a very cool reception in the Senate. And it's hard to know exactly why. And then the other thing that I think could have a big impact is the whole discussion around changing how preschool students are counted.
Absolutely.
And that's in the House. And I think it's pretty hard to see exactly where that's going, so.
And I think, we may not have mentioned, but Nick took the opportunity to testify in front of the House and Senate Ed on behalf, using a similar statement to that which he shared with us on behalf of students from Essex. And I was very appreciative that he was available. He did a great job. And the event itself was, the room was packed. Only students spoke. We were there for at least more than an hour of it probably, right? Before we headed out. And it was incredibly impactful. What did you think of it, Nick?
Oh, yeah, it was fantastic. We had, we had, there was input of all sorts, poems, poems, testimonies. Like people just went up without any preparation, just freaking. Sorry, I shouldn't say freaking.
He's passionate about this.
And really, really expressed their emotions well, but in a constructive way that really gave the legislatures the proper input they needed. It was fantastic, see so much mobilization around this subject.
I was so grateful that, yeah.
Thank you.
If they had the courage and strength of the students in that room, there'll be some changes. And it sounds as though there's been some movement so that I feel your voices were heard. It was amazing.
And, you know, we probably should say that the gun safety, S-55 did pass. And indications are that the governor will sign it, so. And that was one of the pills that we sent to resolution about. Okay. So next, well, let's do the next meeting agenda. Let's not forget that the annual meeting is Monday night. So hopefully you will all be there. And you will encourage friends and neighbors to attend. The, does anyone have anything for the board agenda on the seventeenth? I will tell you that we are going to have a workshop that night with Chris Leopold to talk about student discipline hearings. I think we've struggled through two now. And part of our struggle has been not completely understanding our role. It is semi-judicial, but it's confusing sometimes exactly how judicial and how we should approach some of this work. And so it's an opportunity away from a hearing to ask Chris questions about how we should be thinking about the issues that could come before us. Beth, what else is coming up on the seventeenth?
I wondered about if you would like a continuous improvement plan, if it's been submitted. It should be submitted to the state by then without feedback. But we could send you that. We could present the first draft to you, which follows the goal. So I think it's good timing of that.
That is good. I think that would be good timing.
What about the grade change?
That, it will happen May first at that meeting.
May first?
I think that's the following.
May first is the first Tuesday in May, so it's.
And why, were we talking about the seventeenth or did I have that?
No, we were. The confirmation from Rob, I didn't have yet.
About being ready to present that?
Correct. And so there's things that he wants to put in place before he comes to the board. So he has a better timeline.
Okay. All right. And I'm, I think there's something else, but I'm not remembering it right now. But I have a chance to be at the meeting somewhere. We said it, always if some of you think of things between now and next Monday, please let me know. All right, takeaways from this meeting. Well, I would say Beth's conversation around equity and her goals are a really important piece of this meeting. I think depending on when the takeaways go out, one more reminder about the budget vote isn't a bad idea.
I will get them typed up early and be ready to send them out.
Yep. Probably the school calendar for next year, a link to that is helpful. And information about the last day for this year. We might as well put that in as many places as possible. And I think a reminder about the third engagement around stop and start times, that will take place on the seventeenth at 5:30, would be a good thing to do. Anything else? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion that we move. Did you have anything else you wanted to say? Okay. I'll entertain a motion that we move into executive session to discuss the superintendent's contract.
Motion made.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Thank you, everyone. We'll move to the conference room.